That clock's actually a little slow. Alrighty, let's call the January 24th Board Meeting to order. All members are present. If you'll join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Dr. Ritter, I think we'll start with you on special recognitions.
I don't know what's so special about this year, but we have all kinds of stuff for the Board as far as Board recognition is concerned. And so, on that note, I want to thank the Board for all the time and all the volunteer time that you have as far as this district is concerned. But also, I want to really congratulate you because we really are the largest district, credited district, high performance. And really, you as the governing body are really responsible for a lot of that. Of course, we know it's really the kids, the students and the teachers. But you really govern the policy and also oversee the budget. So I want to really take this time to thank you, but also to recognize you. So, really, also, I have some resolutions here from the Governor as well as all of our representatives from the Missouri House as far as our local representatives. I'll read the Governor's resolutions, much shorter. That's okay. Unless you want more, I can do more. A proclamation, whereas a system of quality public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, and whereas the people of Missouri have a long tradition of support for public education in their local school districts, and whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts, and whereas local school boards acting on behalf of and in close connection with the people of their communities chart the direction of education in their communities, and whereas local school boards serve as the key community advocate for children, youths, and the public schools. Now therefore, I, Jeremiah W.J. Nixon, Governor of the State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim January 22nd through the 28th, 2012, to be the School Board Recognition Week in Missouri, and urge all Missourians to recognize school boards as they strive with their communities to improve our public schools through quality leadership. So in testimony they're aware of, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to be affixed, et cetera, his signature. And the same thing is true as far as the Missouri House of Representatives, more direct to you as a school board. At this time before I close, Glenda Turkell has something that she'd like to give the Board members. So Glenda, are you there, please?
On behalf of Springfield MSTA, we'd like to thank you for your service to our staff, to our community members, and most importantly, to our students. And there are a couple of items inside the portfolio you might want to take a look at as well. Thank you.
We know that all of you, I believe, oh no, I'm sorry, Denise, Dr. Frederick does not have this yet, but you have something that you could hang on your wall, put on your desk, wherever you would like to put it, and it's a certificate of appreciation coming from Missouri School Boards Association. And we have one for each of you, so I'll hand that out as well. On a final note, really, these are very trying times. These are times where public schools are really getting really a bad rap, as far as I'm concerned. And really, our public community, not ours here in Springfield, but across the country, are trying to define reform. And we in Springfield, you as a school board, really believe in local parentis, really believe very strongly in as far as local control, and have done a very good job of that, and I really appreciate that. And hopefully, you'll continue to really seek that as far as your position as a school board. So I want to thank you. So on behalf of the school board, I'd like to everybody stand and show their appreciation for the school board. My understanding is we have some family here that are also showing appreciation. Dr. Frederick, do you want to introduce your sister?
My sister's here, Susie McSwain. She's always been a great support to me, and this is still pretty exciting for our family for me to be on the Board. So she's here to support.
Excellent. Anybody else have anybody in the audience they want to introduce? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter, and thank you to everybody for, you know, we represent our community and you're part of the community, and we just strive to represent you well and to do a good job. And the big paycheck makes a difference, too. Thank you. Do any Board members have agenda modifications? Thank you. The President's Report, I really have nothing specific to talk about tonight other than the fact that Mr. Lee and Dr. Ritter, several staff members, and I will represent our district and our community at the Springfield Salute to the Legislators tomorrow in Jeff City. And Dr. Ritter actually is going to testify, and I know Mr. Lee's been up there multiple times this week. So we'll twist arms, pat backs, and shake hands and hope to do some good. Dr. Ritter, your report?
Yes, I just have a couple of things I want to recognize from staff. The Missouri Hotel had a fire, and we had, we've been working closely with them, and they moved the children to North Cox or Cox North and families. And our transportation people really responded very well and did a great job with that. Also, James Grandin at Boyd just did a phenomenal job helping those families, helping those children, and so I want to thank him for that. Another person who is working with the Care to Learn, and I believe we're talking about $150,000, is basically rallying our staff around taking children and families into stores after the holidays with $100 to spend to be able to use the money to spend on food, clothing, or whatever they feel that is needed for their family. And so what's really kind of neat about this is the opportunity for our staff to participate in that experience. And so, Dr. Anderson's been working very hard on that, and I want to thank him for that. So, anyway, other than that, that's really all I have. I kind of want to move this along as fast as we can today. So, anyway, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Dr. Ritter's driving to Jeff City after our meeting.
That's right.
I think we have no comments from the public to address agenda items. So we'll move on to the information items for the January Quarterly Report. Ms. Kissinger.
Good evening, Dr. Prater, Board members, and Dr. Ritter. As part of the introduction to tonight's report, we want to acknowledge how the revisioning process for SP5 provides an exciting opportunity to once again innovate how we report the results for the strategic plan to the Board and the community. Many of you on the Board remember that in 2006, 2007, SP5 was deployed, and the first quarterly report was brought to the Board in December of 2006. As Mr. Manus has indicated recently to the Board, there's an exciting revisioning process occurring with our strategic plan. And the revisions to the goals, indicators, and measures being finalized will give us the opportunity to consider how we might improve the reporting through the quarterly report process. A couple of examples of questions we'll ask as those indicators and goals and measures are finalized is how might we better leverage technology to more effectively and efficiently report results of the strategic plan to the Board and the community? And then in response to some feedback from Board members in the past, how might we better provide meaningful follow-up for the identified opportunities for improvement? And those are just a couple of examples of things that we want to consider as we look to innovate the quarterly reporting process. For the remainder of the school year, we plan to continue following our current reporting plan and process, but we do look forward to future opportunities to innovate that to better meet your needs as a Board and the needs of our community and understanding our performance. Tonight, Dr. Matt Goodman is here to provide key results for our second quarterly report for the 2011-2012 school year. Dr. Goodman?
Thank you and good evening. This evening, I'll be sharing the second quarterly report for the 2011-2012 school year. Bringing the report forward this evening, we will take a look at the following areas that have been identified in the review of the data. Two opportunities for improvement, one with graduation rate, looking at comparable performance. And additionally, we'll share kind of a change related to a new four-year rate. Additionally, we'll take a look at attendance rate, again, comparable performance. Then updates brought forward will include Communication Arts from the Performance Series, looking at cohort results across a span of assessment windows. Then we will bring the ACT Composite and looking at comparable performance there, as well as an update related to workers' compensation incident rates and the specific measure there being lost workdays. Finally, we'll close with the strengths identified, including ACT comparable performance and the specific composite areas of English, reading, math, and science. First opportunity for improvement to bring this evening deals with graduation rate and comparable performance. Recall, as we brought forth in the first quarterly report, the comparable units of Missouri and our other units, including the regional cohort, we see here Springfield Public Schools as blue, and we can see our performance relative to those within which we compare against. And so that criteria, then, looking at that comparable performance and not exceeding the majority of comparable districts, thus identifies it as an opportunity for improvement. The additional piece that I'll go to on the next slide deals with the four-year graduation rate. And the four-year graduation rate is a new rate, if you will, for Missouri. It comes about as a revision and an add-on to No Child Left Behind from, I believe it was 2008. And at that point, there was a kind of a push and a drive towards standardizing the graduation rate across the United States. And so the way that that was determined to do was to go after a four-year rate. And so, we have the graduation rate as we've been using it, what I might call right now the old rate versus the new rate. The important piece to kind of get at here is that they really do kind of reflect two different things. So the graduation rate, as we're seeing and as we are used to it and thinking about it in this way, reflects students that graduate. You say, well, how can we get much different than that? Well, the new four-year rate is looking at students that graduate within four years versus the old rate, if you will, the way we're used to is students graduating. So it actually kind of narrows it down and says, what is the rate of students graduating within four years? Our understanding at this point is that DESI will make both data pieces available, the full graduation rate, if you will, percent of students graduating, and then also the four-year rate specifically. And so, if, in recollection to the MSET 5 presentation, it appears that both rates may begin from an accreditation standpoint. So the result then on the four-year rate, we can see for everyone, it would essentially have to be lower unless it was to be the exact same that everyone's graduation rate was the exact same as their four-year rate because it's a smaller window. What's interesting in this regard from a comparison perspective is how much closer the Springfield rate is to the Missouri rate versus the overall rate. Second opportunity for improvement to bring this evening also deals with the comparable performance, and this time we're looking also at attendance rate. And again, we're looking at performance relative to meeting or exceeding the majority of comparables. And you can see there really are two groupings as to where the 2010-2011 results fell. We have Rockwood and the regional cohort reflected in green and kind of the plum towards the top. And then we see North Kansas City, Columbia, and ourselves kind of grouped together. So we really see kind of two places where the data fall related to attendance rate. On the update side, we have Communication Arts, Performance Series cohort performance, and this had been identified as an update previously, and so rolling that forward. And so, what we're putting in here then is we have the beginning of year 11-12. We are in the middle of, the middle-of-year window presently, so beginning-of-year is our most recent data point here. And so we see then the scaled score tracked over time for these two content areas across the grade levels. And so, the way that we can kind of look at that is if we say pick fifth grade, 11-12, those would be fifth graders presently, beginning-of-year 11-12. And then what was, what did the score look like at the end of year 10-11? At the middle of year 10-11, at the beginning of year 10-11? So it's going back in that regard. The other update in this area deals with ACT comparable composite. And so this, we're looking at our ACT composite score against our comparisons. We can see how that performance comes in. And then when we go to the final update before moving into the strengths, deals with workers' compensation incident rates and particularly injuries with lost workdays. And what we see here is that down is good, thus the down-good arrow that we want to see a reduction in this area. And so, SPS is reflected with blue with a U.S. Department of Labor statistic and also a Missouri Department of Labor statistic. And you note that in the title, this does say combined public and private. There is also now the availability of the data for just public institutions, which actually is a even better comparison for us. And so we did report that for you in the report as well. That actually gets it just a little bit closer to a comparable unit in that regard. On the strength side, these all fall kind of in the same mechanism where we're looking at the disaggregation kind of by the content area for SPS versus state and national averages. And across all these that I'll bring forward, we meet or exceed, thus indicating the strength. However, what's interesting is if we look at just the performance of 2010-2011 relative to the other years being displayed, we can see that generally that 2010-2011 is at the upper end across those. So in the case of English, and then reading, math, and then finally, science. So we can see that uptick across those, particularly even from 9-10 to 10-11. So very much celebration in that regard. So this evening then, we have brought forward opportunities for improvement identified as graduation rate and attendance rate, updates related to Communication Arts Performance Series cohort, ACT composite comparable performance, workers' compensation incident rates, and then the ACT subset areas of English, reading, math, and science as strengths. And I'll be happy to take any questions at this time.
President, the number of students taking the ACT static, are they going up?
Yeah, well, we kind of think about it from the percentage piece, and I can, we've got that in there, too. It's pretty consistent for us. It's a pretty steady percentage.
On the incident rates, do we disaggregate those incidents occurrences by job description? I'm just wondering if we do that.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Chouda's on that one.
That's fine. Do we disaggregate on the incidence rate, on the incidence rate by job description? In other words, I'm wondering if some jobs, there's a predisposition for more injuries based on the job description than others. Do we see any trends that?
We always have the slip and falls, that's standard. We, one of the things we did in the last couple of years is we provided the bus drivers with, I can't remember what they're called, but it's a rubber thing that they kind of slip on their shoes and it prevents slipping on the ice. So we've done a number of things to address it as is indicated by the data. The numbers have been very good. And I do want to remind the Board that it's probably been three or four years ago, because of the reduction in the workers' comp, we were able to reduce the budget overall by $400,000 on workers' comp. And we've never increased that since.
Thank you.
I have a question about how we might go about, the concern I have about the ACT measurement, when you look, really, the national performance and the state performance are really flat. You know, it takes a lot of movement. And I think, you know, we can pretty much be assured that those are not going to move up and down too much. And so, certainly, our goal locally is to continue to have our score increase. So if those are going to stay flat and we're already above the national and state average, it seems like we might want to consider a higher benchmark for us. And I don't know how that gets woven into the, you know, I'm just, I can't remember how those benchmarks get in place. That's something I'm interested in.
So the data is kind of, it's really available in kind of two different ways, and thus why it kind of has to be presented in two different ways. So we can do the comparison, if you will, off of the overall composite. However, we know we also, on like the strategic planning side with saying we want to improve mathematics performance or reading, we can then get the disaggregated, but only for ourselves, state, and nation. So we don't have that available to do, you know, how does that look for Rockwood, so to speak, or Columbia?
I guess for us to say it's a strength when we started higher and we've stayed higher, to me, doesn't give us the incentive locally. I don't know, maybe that measurement is, I know we went back and looked at not comparing ourselves to Hazelwood because that was always, you know, at the bottom. And so, I see certainly some value in comparing ourselves to our cohorts and our comparable districts. But I do have a concern of keeping that measurement in because I just don't think it tells us much other than we started above the national and state average and we're staying there. And actually, you know, so I don't know if we put in, we want to be a certain percentage higher, and we want that percentage to grow over the years. But that was just something that stuck out to me as I looked at that. And I think, I think ACT, I mean, at least it seemed kind of like the hot measurement for a while. I don't know if that's going to scale off or not, but I think that's going to be a test that's going to be around a while that maybe more and more kids take, so students take.
I think we're going to see smarter balance assessment take its place. And so I think that's in 2015, 14, 15, something like that. Now, that's the plan. We'll see if it happens.
Is that a different company or is it?
Well, ACT is trying to, it's different, yes. ACT is trying to own it, but.
I imagine they are.
Yeah.
The Performance Series, the scale scores, and I'm talking, looking at, I think it's page nine, figure two. And I know we talked about kind of how that is broken down into quartiles and that Scantron will give us kind of the national average of what the top quartile, the growth you should see and versus the bottom quartile. This is a, just kind of a universal growth.
Right.
So this is all fourth graders here in the district, beginning, middle, and then beginning of this school year. Is there a number or a point based on where our kids started? For example, our fourth grade Communication Arts, where they started to where, and I guess that's the graphic.
Yeah.
I'll just say, that graph means nothing to me.
Right. And so when we think about, so when we think about the idea of growth, we really have to think about how we stage it relative to the data that's available. And so, for example, when we think about what we have at second quarterly, we have our beginning-of-year kind of distribution of where are the kids distributed relative to the quartiles. So then after we finish the middle-of-year window that we're in now, and thus what we'll bring back in that third quarterly report, will be what do we see with the gains up into the middle of the year relative to the expectation? So that when bringing in the mid-year point says, okay, how are we on track relative to what was expected? And then at that fourth quarterly report, we bring in the full-year perspective that says, okay, if we account for what the expectation was, where were we at relative to what was expected? So you're absolutely correct that the scaled score measure here is kind of a broad, kind of a gross measure, if you will, overall gross in that regard, that is just doing the average. So we kind of have to put that piece along with the gains perspective that will come as the tests unfold over the course of the year. So this was simply to give a sense of what do we see distribution-wise with the quartiles this year versus last year?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Our next information item is the Bond Projects Report. Mr. Wint?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. Dr. Ritter, it is my pleasure to present the 2009 Bond Project Quarterly Update to you this evening. Just as a little recap, some of the completed air conditioning projects. We had Jared and Reed, which basically were, the majority of those projects were done during the summer of the 2010 year. This past summer, 2011, we had four air conditioning projects which were our focus. Boyd, Robertson, Roundtree, and York were in the final closeout phases of those projects. And as we finish the test and balance and commissioning of those, we anticipate closing those out fairly soon. In construction, we'll have the Sunshine Project for this summer. Actually, we'll be starting that this spring, that the Board just approved that contract earlier this month. And then our remaining projects with Phelps, which is ready to advertise now, and Teft, which will also be ready to advertise shortly. And on to the long-awaited construction projects that we have. It's been a long planning process, and I do want to thank the many teams of folks that have been working on those and the staff that has put a lot of time in the planning. And Hillcrest, which we awarded that contract to Bales Construction on the 10th of this month. The current completion, pending weather delays and other contractual issues, is March of 2013. We just had our pre-construction meeting earlier this week at Hillcrest. Westport was awarded at the combined session in December, and that was to DeWitt and Associates. And we're looking at May of 2013. We have received the demolition permit for selected demolition for renovation internally in the building. We've also received the stormwater detention permit. The regular building permit is still pending, and that's, you'll see later this evening, an easement coming forward, which is a piece of that puzzle. But as excitement, I would just show you here, we do have a few things. And as we look at it here, this one on the top left, excuse me just a second, is for the temporary construction access to the site. That actually is off of Hilton and comes in on the northwest corner of the Parks property for that. The top right, that photo there starts the grading for the building pad and also the stormwater detention, which needs to be in place. And the bottom photo is actually where we separate off for safety purposes for students and staff. And that barrier there then leads into the wing that is to be renovated. So we have that. Need to show some exciting photos. Jeffries was another contract just awarded, and that is to the Larry Snyder and Company. The pre-construction meeting for that is coming up this Friday. And our completion is this November 2012 is when we anticipate completion for that project. Glendale High School, the electrical and technology infrastructure work had been completed. We're just working through and finally getting through processing the closeout documents, so that's closing out now. And then our technology for our smart boards, as you can see with the Phase 1 and 2 training and then the smart board installations at the 79%, and they are ahead of schedule with the technology smart board installations. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have this evening.
So when you spend all this money, we need to have another bond issue, I guess.
We'll be happy to do whatever we can.
Tons of need.
Thank you very much. The weather this winter has probably helped get things started.
So far, so good.
One complaint, I'm hearing from students, too good a weather.
We have two action items for separate consideration that we'll need to vote on tonight. And Mr. Wint, you have the first one.
Yes, this is the easement that I referenced for the Westport project. This is for a sanitary sewer easement for the city. This is one of the components in receiving the full building permit for the contractor. And it's a standard sanitary sewer easement, as you see on Exhibit A. And with that, we would, administration would recommend that the, that the Board approves the reference sanitary sewer easement to the city of Springfield.
This is Twitty, second from Mr. Lee, that the board approve the above-referenced sanitary sewer easement to the city of Springfield. Speaking of money, Mr. Chodas.
Thank you. In February, I'll be presenting to the board revenue projections for the year, but since this is January 24th, the picture is starting to clear. The second January property tax payment has been received, putting our revenue for the current property taxes 3.1 million better than last year, but before you get too excited, that's within $40,000 of the budget. Delinquent property taxes continue to track almost exactly with last year, but because we didn't believe the numbers last year could be as high as they were, it was significantly higher than it has been historically, we're currently about 900,000 higher than budget on delinquent taxes. Sales taxes through December are about 490,000 better than last year, and about 375,000 better than budget. We just on Friday received the January sales tax information, and that came in about 194,000 better than last January. And residential placement excess cost funding, which is amounts received for children in residential placements, came in about 179,000 higher than budget. And I know there's been some talk about the state possibly withholding some money, depending on how things go the next month or two. We did anticipate some holdback from the state in our transportation funding, which is one of the areas that they typically hit. We, our budget for this year is a little over $1 million, and the state is currently projecting transportation funding at 1.5 million, or about 500,000 higher than budget. As for the state formula, in a prior board meeting, I showed the board that the state funding typically increases throughout the year, and in fact, just in January, they increased the proration from 92% to 93%, and that, what that did was increase our funding through the state formula by 480,000, putting us about 226,000 better than budget at this time. So, all the numbers, all the revenue numbers at least appear to be good, and very pleased with that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And it seems like a lot of it is because we're very conservative with our budget.
I'm sorry, I, yes, we're conservative.
I think that's a good place to be, but I think, yeah.
So you need, we need a motion to accept the treasurer's report, Mrs. Callen, Dr. Frederick, do we accept the treasurer's report as posted?
Thank you.
I do want to congratulate Mr. Chodas and his team for real conservative budget estimations, but also, I want to caution the board as far as where the state's going to go over the next couple of months, just a little caution, so.
There are several routine action items, and the board may choose to approve these in one motion, if they so choose.
So moved.
Mrs. Callen.
Second.
Mr. Lee, that the board approve the routine action items as submitted. And then we have some general consent items that are also listed on the agenda, and we can do the same thing with a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Lee.
Second.
Mrs. Twitty, that the board approve the, each recommendation in the general consent agenda. The information items are listed on your board docs that we approved at the last meeting, and if there are no questions with, about those, we can move to comments to address non-agenda items, and I think we have one speaker, Mr. Monday. Let me remind speakers that comments are limited to three minutes, it's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or staff members by name in open meeting.
Okay. Good afternoon, Dr. Ritter, distinguished school board, and I, first off, want to thank you for, and the staff here, thank you for your service to our children, our grandchildren, working in Springfield surrounding schools. Second, if I make it to this Sunday, January 29th, I will be 64 years of age, and wonder if I don't get no respect, as Rodney Dangerfield used to say, and also the Beagle Song said something about, I wonder if they'll still love me when I'm 64, so.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
Oh, well, as Grandpa Bob, I will share with you, as I have over the last few years, our American, his story, which is not being taught in public schools arena, like it was to a large degree when I was here through Central High School and Studebys, when we were number one in mathematics, science, and history in all of the nations of the earth. A personal thank you to Dr. William Federer, Dee Wampfler, Greg Thompson, and other great American patriots and authors who are showing our Christian, United States of America quotes. I just want to share a couple of these with you. John F. Kennedy, with a good conscience, our only sure reward with history, the final judge of our deeds, let us go forth to lead the land we love, asking his blessing and his help, but knowing that here on God's work must truly be our own. John F. Kennedy, 35th President of the United States. George Washington, direct my thoughts, words, and work, wash away my sins in the immaculate blood of the Lamb, and purge my heart in thy Holy Spirit, daily frame me more and more into the likeness of thy Son, Jesus Christ. George Washington, we all know who he was. Recently, two murders of students in and about a region of this area, I've been on death row the last hour of a man's life in Huntsville, I doubt anybody here else has been on death row the last hour of a man's life, very unpleasant thing. Also allegations of rape in a nearby public school outside of Springfield, how terrible. Let's put the Ten Commandments back in the public school, Dr. Ritter, so that our youth understand the moral code of ethics that most of us in this room were made aware of, even in our public Springfield schools. I am Bob Monday, bidding you the best, may the good Lord bless.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. I don't believe we have any other comments. Legislative report, which one of you wants to start?
See your list, go ahead.
Yeah.
Long list. In some of it, I'll let Dr. Ritter maybe address part of this. The NCLB waiver, talked to commissioner, I met with the commissioner today, they're getting ready to draft three of the waiver, which is really good news, because they've trimmed it down significantly to match only what the feds are asking for, and not any superfluous state requirements, so they're not tied together, which the first two drafts were, incorporated a lot of the state requirements. So they've really trimmed it down, and they've listened, I know they listened to our comments, they listened to MSBA's comments, so they've really taken to heart the waiver. And the word that I hear is those states that don't ask for a waiver, NCLB is going to come down hard. So it's kind of a, they're encouraging them to do the waiver, which basically takes it out of Congress's hands, they don't have to worry about it, because everybody's got waivers. But I haven't seen the third draft yet, but it's on its way out, but she said today that it's much trimmed down, and we should be happy with it. And, you know, it's like, as she said today, it's the worst, it's the best of the two evils, so.
I agree.
You take your best medicine, be as bad as it might be. Second thing, I just want to remind the board, MSBA is holding their legislative forum on February 21st, certainly if anybody wants to go up for that, I know that's the board meeting that night, but we'll be back in time for the board meeting to do that, be an opportunity to go meet with legislators also that afternoon, so there'll be several presentations that morning on issues, and then some, some of us will be on panels to talk about issues and what we're doing lobbying and advocacy efforts, so if you can, I'm sure we've got information to sign up, if any of you'd like to go to that in Jeff City. Next week, I'll be in Washington at the Federalations, talking to our legislative delegation in Washington with MSBA. It's really interesting, so far we've been, we've committed to all of them who's going to meet with us personally, as opposed to just staffers, which is really strange. That could be it. But, so that'll be going on next week, and a lot of things, basically talking charter schools, waivers, Title I funding, IDA funding will be the primary topics that we'll be talking to them about. As far as the funding formula, that issue today, a lot of talk about, it's going to be really hard for public schools to get an increase with cuts being made other places. Higher Ed taking a 12 and a half percent cut, and then we getting an increase is really going to be a tough sell. So whether that will go through or not, I don't know, that's kind of the buzz, that it's really hard to give anybody an increase with major cuts, looks like Desi's going to get cut 20 people, I mean, they're just talking about significant cuts in state government, so I, don't spend the $5 million yet, don't know if it'll make it to us or not. Several bills that are just interesting bills that are out there, a huge charter bill is going to be talked about tomorrow morning, in fact, Dr. Ritter's testifying in the morning, and I'm going up in the morning for a Senate and House hearing on charter bill, but it's really, one, expansion of charter schools and addressing some accountability, but the biggest thing, it's creating a charter commission that's appointed by the governor to oversee charter schools, which is, makes no sense, but that's what they're proposing, to do that, at our expense, to set this up, our taxpayers, to do that, to hold the accountability.
Do you know, so the charter schools wouldn't be under the state board, that they'd be under this special commission?
That's correct.
So, there'd be, Desi's being asked to, the agency that supports public education in Missouri right now is being asked to cut their...
Staff.
Staff and their support to schools, but...
Right now, Desi has a half a person following charter schools, so they're basically, it's not happening. This is, the model of having a commission is typical for other states.
Yeah, Colorado has that.
But...
I'd be interested to know, if it's appointment from the governor, does it follow along party lines, and would it?
It could change with the governor, if the governor changes, it could change. That was one of the...
So it wouldn't be like the state?
That's one of the concerns that was brought up today, that as governors change, so may the commission. So while you may have a friendly governor right now toward public education, next time you may not. I don't know where it will go, but it's...
It's the same, it was the same laws last year, they had the same bill, didn't get, didn't get out of committee, but this year it's going to get out of committee because of the committee they had set up.
Yeah.
Didn't they expand the committee?
Yeah, they expanded it.
So they got the votes?
They stacked it.
Oh, yeah, it's going to go out, for sure.
It will definitely get out of committee. Another bill that's really an interesting bill is House Bill 1206, which is a transfer bill that's basically dealing with misia, of allowing students to transfer athletically to districts, and if they get turned down, there's automatic, it goes to Circuit Court for, to be resolved, and then it's a mess.
It's not going to get anywhere.
And I don't know that it will get anywhere either, but it's basically gotten misia. And then the last one, which I think Dr. Ritter's even testifying to, is the Desi bill, which is asked to accelerate their taking action on unaccredited districts, and right now it's two years, they have to wait two years timeframe before anything can be done. Desi's asking to waive that and get the timeframe off, so they could do it quicker, or one of the good thing is, they can do it later.
It's flexible.
So it's, it just opens up the time and doesn't put a rock solid, it has to be two years. They could do it quicker, they could do it longer if they see progress, and it's probably a pretty good bill.
It is, it's...
Hopefully, it will keep the mayor out of running Kansas City, you know, and something like that, so that'll be talked about tomorrow, I think, and so they were optimistic, trying to put it on the fast track and keep all the amendments off of it, I don't know if that's going to happen, but they're trying. Just as a side note, I don't know if you all read about the Kansas City situation, where their board, they have, they're broken up into sub-districts as a zone, whatever they're called, they had three of them, they had no candidates apply for the board, so they have nobody running for school board in three of their zones, and so everything is now right in, which is really disappointing from the standpoint of, I thought with all the stuff going on in Kansas City, that the community was starting to rally around them and support them, and this didn't help them, and, because now, hey, what do you mean the community's helping, there, nobody even is running, and so, one is, the whole zone concept needs to go away, but that's, that's a whole different fight, but I don't know what's going to happen now with Kansas City on their board, it's, it's kind of a mess now. I was hoping it would clear up, if they get some good candidates running, but that didn't happen. So, lots of things going on, particularly tomorrow, so you can follow up, whatever.
Well, you hit almost all of it, except for the Desi bill, the Senate wrote an identical bill, and they're both going to come through really fast, and so I think it's going to happen no matter what. I don't think they're going to allow anything to get on it either, because both, both the head of the House and head of the Senate said they're going to wipe it clean and move it along, so I think it's going to happen.
And I think one of the things that would, will really help that is the fact that since St. Louis has had their appointed board, St. Louis has made huge strides in their achievement, they're that close to being accredited, and I heard today that 13 students, they're away from being accredited, out of the whole school, and that may be, I don't know, but that may be duplicate things in subgroups for all I know, I don't know that for sure, but they were talking about 13 kids today, is all they are from being accredited, and that's a provisionally credit, but that's a long way from where they were four, five years ago, and they've done great things in St. Louis, and as we said before, take the charter schools out, they're accredited. And so, which is, that's another story too, but they've done great, and I think that may be something that Desi could use as a solution in Kansas City potentially, and it's supportive that it's worked, and so, but who knows what's going to happen there? Hopefully, that's, I mean, they've got good basis to move forward if they'll just do that, so.
Other than the state of the state, which everybody was aware of, and the target there, I do want to mention that Kent Medlin, who heads up the Southwest Region as far as mass is concerned, Superintendent Willard wanted a press conference, and we're going to have a press conference, we're going to partner with them, and there's going to be about 20 superintendents there supporting the governor's position, not necessarily supporting the governor politically, as we discussed, and so we're going to do that, and I think that's going to be tomorrow, when is it, tomorrow, Thursday, Thursday at noon, and so I just want to give you a heads up that we're going to do that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Questions?
I didn't have much to say. I did it all.
Yeah. Thank you both, and thanks for the time that you both have been putting in up there, the miles you've been putting in up there. Future issues, we need to talk a little bit about February's meeting, and we initially had a meeting on the 7th, and on the 21st, study session on the 7th, a meeting on the 21st. We moved to a combined meeting on the 21st because there was an inkling that the state auto report might be on the 7th, that may or may not happen now, so I think until we know for sure, let's just leave a combined meeting on the 21st if we have no pressing issues that we'll need to do at the study session, but if you'll give me the leeway to change that in a week. But if you'll give me the leeway to change that in a week if we need to. And we should know more, Mr. Chodas, probably within a few days, okay?
Do you need calendars or availability, is Kathy needed, or?
Not yet, I don't think.
Not yet.
7th anyway, so that's great.
Yeah.
This is out of our control.
Out of our control.
That's what I was going to say, really.
Yeah, this is all in the control of the State Auditor's Office, so. And if you have any friends up there?
No.
So anyway, we'll wait and see and be flexible on our February, our calendar, if we could. Any other issues?
Can I just have a clarification, and maybe Mr. Chodas is the best person to... What is the window in which that report, i- i- is there a timeframe in which that report needs to come to us? Because I guess I'm a little concerned, you know, some of us are making plans around particular meetings, and then those meetings get changed. And so, I mean, is there a time when that's finalized and publicized to the, to the community, or?
They kept telling me it was tentative, not having been through this process before myself.
Yeah, I understand, I, I understand. I know you, you and your staff are anxious to have it behind us as well, so.
Their staff doesn't know either.
Right, okay, I'm just curious, because, I mean, I think all of us would like to be there if we can, but we do have lives beyond our board service.
I, I asked Mr. Chodas to protest gently for the fear of it being pushed clear until March, but, but to protest a little bit, this latest change, so we'll see if it, if it works.
It's all about calendars.
Yeah. Your financial operations report is on board docs, do your plus deltas please, and we do need to meet an executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters as provided in Section 610021, 1, 3, and 13 RSMO, if I could have that motion. Mrs. Callen?
Second.
Mr. Renner? Great, thank you all very much. We'll adjourn to executive session.